All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'm Lizzie Carroll, Vice Chair of the School Committee, and it's my pleasure to sort of help facilitate this first community forum for this academic year. Sitting in for our Chair, Ada Rosemarin, who's taking some time after a death in her family, and really happy to be joined by School Committee colleagues as well as members of the leadership team and educators from our district. We'll be joined by folks here in person as well as online. I can't see behind me like or know who's online, but I know that hopefully there are people there. We wanted to offer this community forum in a hybrid format to try and make it as accessible as possible. And thank you all for showing up in the dark to come and join us this evening during such a busy time. We are really looking forward to sort of sharing some information with the community this evening and then having some Q and A dialogue about whatever related topics and questions you all are bringing. So the Community Forum series that we have planned and that you've obviously heard about because you're here tonight, it will be sort of designed to touch on the pillars of our strategic plan, which taken together really comprise like the focus of our work in Milton Public Schools. So tonight, we're here to talk about personalized learning and, you know, everything related to that, which is so much. In the future, we'll hold separate Recording in progress. On also Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity in Learning, which are the other two pillars of our strategic plan. The goal is to share information and have the dialogue. So we're going to really explore how personalized learning supports academic excellence for all of our students, look at the connections there and help sort of understand together why this is something that we're choosing to focus on as a district and how it is benefiting our students. So first, we're going to have a series of brief presentations from the experts who are actually doing this work in Milton Public Schools day in and day out. We will then, as I've said, have time for your questions. We're going to take questions both from those of you who are here in the audience in person as well as those who have joined by Zoom. And we'll kind of go into the way that that happens when we open up to that portion of the night. We're going to have the opportunity to hear from some of our teachers in terms of what personalized learning looks like in their classrooms. And then we will also have updates from the Personalized Learning Committee, which is comprised of administrators, teachers, and parents. Before we get to those special guests, I'm really excited to introduce a very special guest who's joined us this evening. Thank you so much, Cindy Tamar, who's providing professional development to our district this year to help put personalized learning into practice. And so we're going to begin with a short overview from Ms. Tamar to sort of help us understand what personalized learning is, how it works, and why it matters, how it can help us. Cindy Tamar is a consultant to districts that are adopting personalized learning and competency-based practices. Ms. Tamar led a highly successful personalized learning initiative as Superintendent of the Melrose Public Schools and as a member of a consortium of Massachusetts districts making changes to advance college and career readiness. Over the course of her career, Cindy has also served as the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Special Education in Bedford. She served in multiple leadership roles in the Boston and Malden Public Schools and taught at the secondary and college levels. She most recently was Executive Director of the Edco Collaborative. Ms. Tamar is also a former member of the Swampscut School Committee. So we're very thankful for you taking this evening to be with us. And I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Lizzie. You much?
Please, yeah, thank you. You might need that microphone over there, yes.
Now it's on. Thank you very much. I'm a teacher at heart. I've I never got over being a teacher, so I tend a tendency to walk and move and talk at the same time. So I'm having a great time working with your staff. They're fabulous. They're very invested. I think they're going to make great progress in this area. But when Janet and Garth ask me to present tonight, I'm certainly not going to go into the depth that I go into with the staff, which gets a little bit geeky. What I want to talk to you about is why do we make this shift to personalized learning? And why are many other districts, not only here, but across the country doing this? So let's talk. It's 2022. We're coming out of COVID. We have children who have had interrupted education. But even prior to that, our kids are in a different educational environment than any of us have ever experienced. When I hire new teachers, I say to them, if you have not been in a classroom in the past five years, you don't know what a classroom is. That's how fast it's changing for all of us. So I should have this picture. And how many of you, this was your classroom? This is what you looked like when you walked in the first day of school. You knew you were going to sit alphabetically. There was going to be a little seating chart. And some of us call this six by six, six by five, because we figured we'd have 30 kids in a classroom. Same setup in 1940. And if you go back into historical records, you can see this setup all the way back probably to Horace Mann. If you go into your children's classrooms, this is what you see. Our children have a very, very different experience than we had. And they bring a very, very different set of talents, interests, and needs to the table when they're in the classroom. They're accustomed to a lot more informality. They're accustomed to a lot more moving around. They're accustomed to a change of pace more often in the classroom. The days of stand and deliver are not effective for them. I often blame it on Sesame Street. Think about Sesame Street when your kids were two, three years old. What happened on Sesame Street? Every 20 seconds, flipped, flipped, flipped. Because that was how they were kept engaged. It went from music to listening to standing up and moving. Nobody sat for 45 minutes, 50 minutes, however long a period is, and was on the receiving end of information, as many of us were. That is not the model our children are accustomed to or do they need. Let's talk part two. I'm going to take this away. So I often say to parents, how many of you had to explain the difference between a complex and a compound sentence today? No one? How many of you had, Janet, how many of you had to do a math word problem? You remember those. The train is going at 60. You're teaching. No, helping with homework? Helping with homework. But you remember what those are. You know, train is going 60 miles an hour. It's going to travel 500 miles. It's going to make three stops. How many hours is it going to take to get to the final stop? All right, nobody's done that today? And how many of you conjugated a verb in Spanish today? But flip that on the other side. How many of you read the newspaper? Wrote an email? Read a prospectus? Wrote a report? How many of you solved a math? But you, yeah, scooping the offing. How many of you planned a budget? Solved a budget? Figured on whether or not you could refinance your house? Looked at your stock investments? And how many of you today interacted with people of other cultures and other nationalities? So what those three subjects did for you, while you may not remember anything from those three subjects, the experience and the skills they gave you is what you carried forth as an adult. And that is what has become more important for your children. There's a very interesting article I read many years ago. It's by Buckminster Fuller. I don't know if many of you know the name. I think you've got to be a bit of an education geek to know the name. And it's called "The Knowledge Doubling Curve." At the beginning of this country's history, 1700 to 1900, it took 200 years for our knowledge, our information, to double. We now live in a world where knowledge doubles every year and maybe in some cases, every week. So while it was important for you to remember the 50 capitals, your kids pick up or go on to this and check it. Different environment, different needs, different interests. Yet, for many of our kids, they're still sitting like this. And it's not working. Before I go on this, let me ask you something personal. How many of you were worried your child will be overlooked? How many of you were worried your child will miss out? How many of you were worried that if your child is not typical, no one will recognize his interests or his talents? And that's what personalized learning is about. It's about getting us to a spot where every kid is recognized, every kid's needs are met. In my own practice, I would say to staff, I don't want to wait for a diagnosis, a label, a test to know a kid's needs are being met. I want to know that in our classrooms, every child's needs are being met without waiting 45 days to qualify for SPED, without having a 504 meeting, without taking an access test to decide whether you're an English language learner Level 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. Our job is to make sure that we understand our kids so that every kid's needs are being met every day in a classroom that is responsive and adaptable. And that's where we need to get. Because at the end of the day, our kids do not have to know the difference between a complex and a compound sentence. They do have to write it, and they have to be literate. You often hear conversation about 21st century skills. This is one representation of it. There's many, many other representations of it. But if you notice, is the foundational literacy. Those are the knowledges that you get in school. Literacy, numeracy, scientific literacy. ICT, obviously, is information computer technology. Financial literacy, cultural and civic literacy. Going back to the questions I asked you, those are the literacies you came away with. But there's other competencies and qualities that our kids need in our environment, the environment into which they are going to enter as adults. They're going to need critical thinking and problem solving, creativity, communication, collaboration, curiosity, initiative, persistence, grit, adaptability, leadership, social and cultural awareness. These are just an example that I picked. If you Google 21st century competencies or 21st century skills, you'll see many, many different versions of it. The other thing that we know going forward is our kids will change jobs many times in their lives. Gone are the days or rare are the days when you go to work for GE. I happen to grow up in a GE town. When you go out to work for GE at 22 and retire at 65, having worked for the company their whole lives. That is not the environment our kids are going to live in. They have to have these competencies. They have to be adaptable, lifelong learners that can weather the changes that are common in our country now, our socioeconomic situation. Just think of what we've weathered for the past three years. So personalized learning, its goal is to move past to the teach the middle, teach to the average, and focus on each child as an individual. So I'm going to share this with you. It's a short video, but I think it captures it pretty well. Can you hear it? Do not have sound.
This is a special setting in Zoom for audio. I very rarely use it, but.
I got everybody else. Now we know the limits of my technological skills because I am not growing up like my children and my grandchildren. Oh, here comes our help. You can't do audio? All right. All right. Well, we can't do audio. So we'll just move on. This PowerPoint has a tiny URL. And if you saw it at the beginning, that means anybody who has a copy of the tiny URL can pull this up on their own computers. So I'm going to jump to this quote. And this quote basically summarizes where we're at in the year 2022. Recognizing that every learner brings a unique set of skills, talents, interests, and needs to their education, we must give educators and students the tools to build unique learning pathways that develop the learner's academic, human, and technical skills. Personalized learning is not about a kid gets to do whatever he wants to do. So I won't misabuse anybody of that notion. It's about us as the educators recognizing that every kid who walks into my classroom has a different set of talents, skills, and needs that I have to find a way to meet. Yet at the same time, I have to provide a standards-based education. And that is the pathway Milton Public Schools has chosen to pursue. So if you don't know the strategy, strategic plan, there is a link to it in my presentation. And as Lizzie talked about before, excuse me. There's three pathways here. Personalized learning, Safe and Supportive Schools, Equity in Learning. Conversation I've had with the staff here in Milton is they're all the same. They are all the same. When you see each child as an individual and you recognize that child's needs and skills and interests, you have created an equitable and safe learning environment where kids feel heard and where they feel they can take risks, academic risks and personal risks. So while the strategic plan thinks of it as three overlapping circles, I look at them as symbiotic. If you want one, you have to have the other two. They are all intertwined. Here he comes again to rescue me. There we go. So again, I'm not going to get into the nitty gritty like I'm doing with the staff. But when you talk about personalized learning, and again, there's many representations, and this is one I happen to like. There are four pillars of personalized learning. Reflective reflection and goal setting. We're working on that with the staff. One of the things you need to do is you have to develop a learning profile, a learner's profile, so that you know who every kid is. Targeted instruction based on that profile. Collaboration and creativity amongst students and staff. And a flexible path and pace. So to give you a small example, the work that I've done and the work I'll help the staff do is we will eventually get to a spot, a part of the planning, where they will develop learning auctions for every kid. And those learning auctions will be based in the practice of UDL. And I do know from Garth's that training in UDL is happening right now. So UDL, you all know what Universal Design for Living is? The curb cuts, the braille on the signs, the crossing that now speaks to you? That's Universal Design for Living. The same concept is applied to teaching nowadays. Universal Design for Learning. It is the idea that every kid accesses information differently, engages with information differently, and expresses how he learns differently. So we will eventually get to a point where we will still follow the curriculum frameworks. That is required in Massachusetts. But we will give kids options as to how they access the information, how they get engaged with it, and then how they prove their knowledge-based competency. It takes a bit of work. It does not happen overnight, but it happens with time. And the thing about this is it recognizes each student's, not only interests, but each student's starting point. Because we know as teachers, when we sit in the room, I may have 25 kids. I don't have 25 kids at the same starting point. And nor am I going to get 25 kids at the same finishing point. Under standards-based education, I have to get them all here or I have to get them all here within a range. But I'm always going to have those kids who can go further. And how do I build into my lessons an ability for those kids to go further? How can I build into my lessons options that engage those students and so that they want to go further? And how do I build into my lessons remediation and re-instruction so that my kids who are struggling can get to where we want them to be? And that is personalized learning. And it's based on what we know about kids. It's the, that's why I tell you, equity in education and personalized learning are intertwined. And when you have them together, kids feel safe in school. So to summarize, and I know you have a lot of presenters today. And this is what I, something I did with the teachers and the administrators to make sure that what people know what personalized learning is and is not. It is not technology-centric. Technology is a tool in personalized learning. Personalized learning is not putting a child in front of a computer and saying, see you in an hour. It is not the same as differentiation and individualization. Those are part of it, but they're not the same. It is not without structure, good planning, and expectations. It is not one size fits all, and that's probably the most important thing. It is individualized. It is not a prepackaged program. It's not deficit-based education, and it's not exclusionary. Let me go back to deficit-based education. A lot of educational practices are based on what a student does not know. And while that is important, personalized learning starts with what does a student know? And where can he sheet go from there? So what it is, it's equitable, inclusive, and culturally and individually responsive. It is learner-centered. There is a shift in personalized learning. We start talking about the student. We talk about the learner. There's a saying in the business, teaching is what happens to you. Learning is what happens with you. And that is the shift here. It is standards-based and rigorous. There is no cutting corners. Everybody still has to pass MCAS. It promotes student agency engagement. Students have a voice. They get to choose. As I said before on the UDL, how am I going to demonstrate my learning? I always tell the story about I had a young student in one of my fourth grades, and he was a computer whiz. He was much better than the adults. And anytime he had to demonstrate his learning, he chose to do something on the computer. A video, a graphic. Didn't matter as long as it proved that he had mastered the material. It uses both data and teacher knowledge to personalize student need. Important thing about personalized learning is we are always taking data. Where is the student today? Where is he two weeks from now? Where is he three months from now? Because you cannot personalize unless you know where that student is at any given time in the course of study. It is flexible and adaptive and growth-oriented. The personalized learning that Milton initiates this year will not resemble what you will have in five years. I can promise you that because it will continue to grow and adapt to the students in front of them and to the teacher's capabilities. And it applies a range of best practices. But the most important thing is whatever personalized learning looks like in Milton, it will be specific to Milton. It will be up to the School Committee and the parents and the staff in Milton to decide what that looks like for Milton Public Schools and your children. It will not be a prepackaged program that somebody else recommends. This is all locally driven, and it is based in what you value and what you want for your children.
Thank you so much for providing us with that context. And I'm thankful now to turn it over to, first, we have Justine Novak, who is a teacher at the Tucker School. And then we will also, I believe, be joined virtually by two additional teachers, Brenda Redding from Milton High School and Michaela Dixon from Pierce Middle School. Just to share some examples of how this actually works in their classrooms at those three different levels. And then we'll have sort of one more brief update from the committee that I mentioned, and then we'll just open it up for your questions. So thank you, thank you very much to our teachers for taking the time to be with us this evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, can you hear me okay? So it's a really hard act to follow, to go after Cindy. So I hope that you're okay. Yes, that's me. So again, I'm Justine Novak. I teach at the Tucker School in fifth grade. And I'm really excited to be here to talk to you about what's happening in my classroom. I do have a caveat. There is a picture, and I will explain a little bit why we're in rows. So I was a little embarrassed during your slide. Okay, so I'm going to show you two examples of what we're doing in the classroom. First, we're going to talk about how my students, I have 24 students who, as Cindy mentioned, students are all different. Not one is the same. So you were going to see how we created, how the students created their own personal learning goals. So at the beginning of the year, you might hear that your student is taking what's called Lexia or iReady. It is a diagnostic that Milton uses. We do it in September. We do it in January, and we do it in June. And when I was a student at Glover School, sometimes I would take an assessment, and I had no idea what I got or what it meant or how my teachers used it. So what we decided to do, I put them in rows so nobody would look at anyone else's folder. Each student in my class got a folder. They got their printout from their September scores. In the Lexia, it has your reading comprehension score. It has your syntactic knowledge. It has your word recognition, and it has your vocabulary recognition in there. So everyone's report is totally different. In addition, we use the Reach for Reading Curriculum. So I put two tests in the folder as well with very detailed notes on how I corrected their writing. One particular item that we are working on is how to do open responses and use quotes from the story to infer what the author is saying. So each student got a folder, and they looked at their data. And from the data, they created their own personal learning goals. Mrs. Driscoll, who was my assistant principal, she was in here with us. And it took us about 45 minutes to go over the data so they could understand where they're at. And we made it a point to say to them, you're not doing bad in any one area. It's an area, if you fall short, it's an area for you to grow. So I'm going to show you two slides. And we did this in math as well. So I'm going to show you two slides. This is one of my students. This is what their personalized learning goal looks like. So on the top left-hand corner, she wrote what her scores were. So in the top, I mean, most importantly, she says, I'm going to stay positive. So what she did was we made an action step. You can have a goal. Great, I want to lose 10 pounds. Well, how am I going to do that? So how are they going to increase their vocabulary? She's going to do that by reading different genres. So we talked about, what does that mean? She is going to read some magazines. She's not a sports person, but I said, you know, reading different types of magazines, like Sports Illustrated Illustrated for Kids. like Sports Illustrated Illustrated for Kids, you're going to increase your vocabulary. So she reads a lot of nonfiction. She has a goal to read three nonfiction books in two months. So the great thing about when students make their own goals is that it gives them an opportunity to go back and think really actively about the book they pick out at the library. Why am I going to pick this book out of the library? Is this going to help me reach my goals? I have found in the two weeks that we've done this, students have taken more of an ownership on their own work. And it's really awesome to see that. And the bottom left-hand corner was her math action steps and her goals. So we're working on division. And so she knows that she needs to work on interpreting remainders to increase her success on her test scores. And then, of course, check her work before handing it in. So this is another student. And one big thing for this student is working within the timeframe that I have given for an assignment. So that's one of my goals that I have for her. And in addition, she has the same goal. So Cindy talked about how we have to know our students. So today is November 9. I would say I know my students so much better than when they came in the door in September. I don't think I would be able to do these goals with them back in September. But now that I have an idea of who they are as individuals and who they are as learners, it's really great for them to see their goals because they mirror what I would have for them as well. This is a really great tool for me to have at conferences so parents can see what their child is learning, what their child is working on. And it has some accountability when this student is doing their work in the classroom. They know that they have a purpose now. Okay, the second item that I wanted to talk to you about, Cindy mentioned how in Massachusetts, we have a standards-based curriculum. So the top box is the standard that we were working on in science at the beginning of October. So we were working on the Earth and the Sun. And that was the standard. That's how it's written in curriculum vernacular. And so you'll notice that it says, "To explain why people on Earth experience day and night." So what I did was I gave my students that standard and the objective. This bottom text box was completely empty. And I said, "Your team must be able to explain what causes day and night. And you're going to be able to do it however way you want to." And so what we did was we brainstormed some ideas together. And they actually created their own assessment. And layman speak, an assessment is a test. I didn't want them to just do a writing, to do a paragraph. I wanted them to come up with however they wanted to explain what causes day and night. So these were some ideas that they came up with. And it was such a fun activity. This actually came from the Super Intense Blog. And so I've had some students who did a skit, some students who did Google Slides. I have one group who did a clay model with a flashlight. And they actually explained what causes day and night that way. We had a comic, and we had some artwork. So as Cindy said, some people might do technology, but assessments can look different ways. And it's their creativity and how they wanted to put together their assessment, going back to how it related to the Massachusetts standard for this activity. Thank you. So thank you so much, Ms. Novak, for sharing about the elementary. So I guess now will be Brenda Redding from the high school. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Hi.
Hi. So am I automatically presenting, or am I just? Let me see. I'm going to figure out how to present. Okay, I'm going to share my screen so that you can see what I'm sharing. Says host disabled. Can I share my screen?
Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us at our first hybrid forum. I think they're trying to fix it for you, Brenda.
No problem.
If you try now, hopefully it should work.
Yeah, it just looks very different than what I... Okay. Hopefully, I'm sharing the right thing. Can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, hello, everyone. My name is Brenda Redding. I teach chemistry and physical science at Milton High School. And thank you very much for having me here. I enjoy working at Milton. And I'm looking forward to sharing with you some of the things that I've been doing in my classroom as a way to personalize learning for my students. So at the beginning of the year, I start by surveying my students just to get to know them and to see how I can make connections with them. Because I want each student to leave my classroom feeling like I know them and that I've worked with them to help them be the best that they can be. And I also ask for their birthdays, which seems kind of corny, but I actually find that they enjoy it. So every time their birthday comes up, we sing "Happy Birthday", just to recognize them and help them feel like they're part of a community because that's how I treat my classroom. I do engage in flexible grouping with the students so that they are not sitting in those rows that was mentioned earlier. I really believe that they learn better when they're talking, when they're helping each other out, as well as, you know, both individually reflecting and through whole group learning as well. We do, obviously, quite a bit of labs, as well as just problem solving and some critical thinking, you know, in groups. In addition to that, I also really push a growth mindset with each of my students that they can improve. So they're given the ability to retake their quizzes. And I tie that to a reflection email, as you heard earlier. It's really important for kids to reflect. And so when they are going to retake a quiz, they look at how they performed on the quiz. They talk about what they struggled with and what they need to do better. Then they practice certain skills. They might talk to me about, you know, improving. And I'll work with them on what they need to do in order to improve and learn from their mistakes. And then they can take the quiz. So that, I find, has been very effective. And it really just encourages kids to try to do the best they can and to improve. And there's no set time limit. So they have a week to do it. But at least they can, they get that opportunity if they don't get it right away, which is fine. And I use a lot of language that really encourages them to realize that it's not about being smart. It's about putting in the time and effort. And anybody can do anything and really improve. I also try to incorporate choice into one or more assessments, into a variety of assessments so that they feel like they can own their own learning. So they have usually one or more projects per quarter. They just finished doing a diversity scientist. These are a couple of examples that students have done, where they chose a scientist from a diverse background who may have, you know, undergone some challenges for various reasons. And they were able to present that in any fashion. They could do it as a recording. They could do a Facebook page. They could do a poster. Some people chose to do artwork. Whatever they felt most comfortable with, they could choose. And they just had to share that particular person. They're also going to do in the future, some will do an element review where they will, you know, learn about elements in chemistry. And they'll share, you know, their importance in the field. It might be chemistry in the news. And again, they're just given a variety. They're given options as to how they want to show their knowledge. And I also do that with certain units. There are some units in chemistry that it's kind of a challenge to do that because it's just so new for the kids and there's so much math involved. But some of the units, I do what's called a personalized learning assessment where they can show me what they understand. And they just work on it. And they come up with a way that they want to present their understanding to me. This is a unit last year that a student did on matter and measurement. And they did it in the form of a children's book. And then another aspect, I try to do a lot of formative checking to make sure that kids understand before we actually take the quizzes and the assessments. And I use games a lot, things like Look at, Kahoot, or Quizlet. And what's good about these games is when the game is done, you can actually, there's two areas. There's one area where you can look at individual students and see how they're doing. I would do that like separately and on my own at night. Or I can just scroll down and look at the questions. And I can look at either by question or by which questions, you know, were wrong most of the time. And then we can sort of talk right then and there in real time about what kids are struggling with. And we can make corrections so that kids are learning. And finally, I also do reflective learning as well on a regular basis through online journal where the students have to take the time to, you know, address maybe a portion of a standard from chemistry. And they have to answer the question in their own journal. And it's individual. But they at least get to share what they've learned and what they understand. And the last thing that I'll say is I also just provide lots of ways for students to access the information, both in their textbook as a hard copy, but also electronically. I provide them lots of videos and PowerPoint notes and graphic organizers just to help students learn. So that's basically what I'm doing in high school chemistry. And thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. So we'll just keep going to get to Michaela Dixon. Are you there from Pierce?
Hi, yes, I am. I can't share my screen until Brenda stops sharing hers, so. So hi, everyone. My name is Kelly Dixon. I teach sixth grade science at Pierce. And similar to Ms. Novak, we talk a lot about two things that we do in sixth grade science. And one is really thinking and playing to their strengths. And the one way we do this is with choice assignments, both in practice and how they choose to access information and how they choose to demonstrate their mastery. So for example, what we just did last week was this continental drift was our standard. And they were able to choose how they wanted to demonstrate their mastery through any of these options. We also had a few students who proposed something totally different. Someone wanted to do like a stop motion animation, which I didn't even know was a skill they had. So they were able to demonstrate what they knew through their choice, building off of their skills. Students that are really into art, a lot of them chose the comic or the picture book. Some of them are tech-savvy students, made videos, followed the whole YouTube format. That is definitely the language they speak. Another one that we'll do later in the year is choosing, again, playing to your strengths. Are you more interested in drawing and doing something artistic? Then maybe you can make a poster. If you're more interested in technology, there's some simulations you can choose. And so students are able to choose from this menu, one, what their interests are of the four categories, and two, what format they're interested in using. Sorry. And then for practice, another one that we do is called, we call it Che Guevara Peño. So there's different levels of spiciness. And students are able to choose, again, based on their interest, what they would like to practice with, and also their comfort level with the material. Are they ready to dive in and really challenge themselves? Do they want to ease in with something more at the base level? I always say, "I don't like spicy food. I like to ease in with mild, if it works my way up." And students are able to choose what they would like to do and based on their interests and on their individual comfort in their skill level. For example, choice assignment. The other big thing we do is this idea that everyone learns all of the information, even if you don't learn it right away. And so we use a mastery system to help ensure that all students get to mastery eventually by the end of our unit or term. So the way this works is at the end of class, we always do a formative check. We call them exit ticket. And students have this document, which is a mastery tracker, in their notebook. So right after they do their exit ticket, they fill in their score, their mastery. So if they get a six out of six, they would fill in 100%, in which case they would just star that they mastered it. They don't need to do any action step for that. However, we talk about no one's going to master everything the first time all year. Eventually, you will need to do something to get to mastery if you didn't get there the first time. So when they do that, they fill in. So we consider 85% mastery. So if they have below that, they do what's called an action step. In this case, the student circle, yes. And then for action steps, we do what we call brain builders. So what they are, are EdPuzzle videos that I created for each topic that have just reviewing the content in different format and with embedded questions for them to practice throughout. And once they complete that, they reassess the same topic, ideally proving to themselves that they now have mastered it. So by the end of the unit, they have this document with all their stars. They've already proven to themselves, "I can do this. I have already done this. I can walk into my assessment at the end of the unit feeling competent." In sixth grade, that we're ensuring students take ownership of actually doing those action steps. We do what's called win days. This stands for whatever I need. And so this is a day in class where students can do whatever they need to improve their mastery. It's an opportunity to complete those brain builders and the actual reassessment for the exit ticket. It's also an opportunity for students to revise any written work. So labs or things like that continental drift assignment that were written, using feedback, they're able to revise those and improve their mastery on written work as well as more standard assessment on the computer. This is just an example of like a win day might look like, where are their scores? Green is sort of what we consider mastery. And then red is just a visual cue for them, which ones do I need to work on? With a little flow chart to help them figure out, where am I in this pathway? What is going to help me best improve my mastery to get to a point where I feel confident for the upcoming assessment? And then on the actual assessments, they're broken down by the topics. And we highlight them. They highlight what they're confident in that they're going to master. I highlight what they actually do master. And then students are able to retake the standards that they didn't master the first time. Again, the ultimate goal is that everyone masters all of the content for sixth grade. They've proven to themselves they learned how to learn it, and they know it. And if you don't get it the first time, then we try again. And that, building that inherent skill of that, like I said at the beginning, you have to be a continuous learner and just building that skill of, okay, if I don't get it right away, but I do need to get it eventually, and how do I do that? We have a retake process. We do reflection, we do corrections. So we have a retake process, we do reflection, we do corrections, they come during what we have flex time at Pierce. I do additional review there. And then ideally by the end of the unit, everyone is able to get to mastery, no matter where they started on the individual topics that were there. Thank you very much for hearing about sixth grade science.
Thanks so much, Michaela. All right. So last but not least, I know we've been hearing a lot of information and we do want to get to questions, but Mr. A.J. Malanson, thank you so much for being here. For those of you that don't know, A.J.'s the Director of Educational Technology and he also co-chairs the Personalized Learning Committee. So you are here to share a quick update with us from that committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. And first, just thank you to school committee and to the superintendents for having this forum this evening. This is an incredible opportunity to share some of the amazing things that are going on. To Michaela, Justine and Brenda, thank you so much for giving us a little insight into what you all are doing to personalize learning in your classrooms. So I just wanted first to give a big shout out to all of our personalized learning team members. We have an incredible team and I want to start by saying, Kirsten Driscoll, thank you so much for stepping up to be the co-chair for our team. I also want to say thank you to Kat DeRoche, who co-chaired with me for the past two years. We have some district leaders that are on our team. Brian Seely, Director of Math. Viveau is the Director of Data and Analytics. Xena Hamada just joined our team. She's the Word Language Director. And then we also have some other teachers from the high school. We have Jillian Piesiak, who's a science teacher at the high school. Brendan, who you just heard from. From Pierce, we have Colin Farady. And at the elementary level, from Cunningham, we have Nawamu Sin. And from Glover Tucker, Jen Van Hill, who's our Instructional Technology Specialist. We also have two family members, Stacy Solomon and Brett Dickens. I also want to give a big thanks to committee member Ross Denny for being such an integral part of our team for three years until she joined school committee. So again, thank you to this amazing team. You guys are incredible and have provided Milton Public School with such a great foundation for personalized learning. So just a quick update. So last year, we supported the district in developing the personalized learning section of our new strategic plan. So not only do we help develop the goal, but we also helped establish the benchmarks and then individual actions that are going to help us meet the benchmarks to meet our goal. We developed a get to know your students student inventory that we shared with the entire staff of Milton Public Schools to help teachers get to know their students' learning styles and interests. So this year, we've already started, got off to a great start, where our focus is going to be helping educate all stakeholders with personalized learning. And so one of the first things that we've done is we have now a draft of an MPS personalized learning site that's going to help educate families and students. And so again, it's just in draft form, but hopefully we'll have this out by either the beginning of the year or a little bit into the new year. So far, we have established that we're going to include what is personalized learning? What does it mean for students? What can it look like in a frequently asked questions page? So we're really excited about this initiative to help families and students understand what personalized learning is and what it could look like in Milton Public Schools. We've also have a draft of a staff site so that we're going to provide personalized learning resources for all of our staff members. And the resources are going to be on the site according to different phases of personalized learning and then by topic. So if a teacher is, teachers who are at different places will be able to go to the phase that they're at, or if they have a specific topic they'd like to learn more about. So we're hopefully going to make it very easy for our staff to navigate. We're also going to apply examples of MPS teachers implementing personalized learning in their classroom. And then I love this page, I can't remember who on our committee came up with a name for this, but we're going to have a page called Small Tweaks, Big Leaps. And just small little things that you can do to adjust what you're already doing in your classes that is going to really benefit our students. So right now, those are our big two focus areas that are really exciting. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Sheehan. Thanks again for having us.
Thank you very much, Paul. Paul, for joining us today. We will have a question and answer period and I think I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Carol.
Sure. Well, I mean, there's been a lot here. I know I've actually learned a lot sitting here. And thank you again to all of the members of your team. Superintendent Sheehan, you've joined. Ms. Tamar, thank you so much for being here. We want to have these experts available to our community, knowing that you definitely may have questions related to personalized learning, really any of those academic related questions or comments that you want to share with the school committee. And you know, the three of us are here to answer, hear your questions, respond. But we also know that you may have questions, I'm guessing and assuming that, you know, our actual expert educators are better equipped to answer when it comes to what does this mean for my child, you know, day in, day out in terms of their learning. So we're all here. Stephanie O'Keefe is going to sort of help us moderate this the rest of the time that we have, up until 8:30, which is really just open time. And I know you're going to be looking to take questions, both from those of you who are here in person, you know, take maybe a couple of questions from in here, then move to see if there's anyone on the Zoom that's bringing questions. When you ask a question, you know, if you want to direct it to anyone in particular, feel free to do that. We'll do our best to answer the questions that you're bringing. And you know, we do hope to get to as many of the questions as possible. So you know, please keep that in mind when we're having time to speak.
Sounds great. I think that if anybody on Zoom wants to speak, they should raise their hand and then we'll promote them to a panel so they can be on the screen. And here, I would imagine, just come to the table.
Yeah, that makes sense.
With the microphone?
Yeah. If you can please use the microphone when you're in here, that way people can be hearing you on the Zoom as well.
There are 19 people watching on Zoom too, which is great.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So no hands raised on Zoom, so if there's anyone here, we could start in person.
Right over the front. So.
That'd be great. Yeah, thanks.
Leroy Walker, 452 June Parkway. Couple of observations, couple of questions, one suggestion. The first observation is it's pretty exciting as a concept, personal learning seems like, particularly as Ms. Norwack talked about it, it could be a different way to engage students. It could be a different way to motivate students. And that's always a good thing. And it's exciting to see how excited the staff are about it. So that's great. Your first presenter said that if you implement personalized learning, then you have safe and supportive schools and you have equity. I disagree with that. Those are three separate and important challenges. And I'm pretty sure the school committee understands that while they may be complementary, they have different objectives, different deliverables and different challenges. But the more specific question is with regard to how in classrooms, the readiness challenges are addressed specifically, let's talk about elementary first. There's a pretty fundamental concept that students have to be reading at grade level by the time they leave third grade. And that's because third grade is the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. And if they don't have that skill by then, they have a deficit that is often difficult or sometimes impossible to make up. So the question on that side and on the flip side is how, for high achievers, how is this actually implemented? And similarly, for students that may have some deficits, they could be students with disabilities, they could be students in certain subgroups. How is this implemented in a way that you not only meet students where they are, but you help to close some of those gaps? And then the suggestion is for the school committee, for upcoming forums, a good idea to share the decks that are presented beforehand so that people can digest. Thanks.
Thank you so much. In terms of the question about a little more information, what this looks like to support, I think, high achieving students as well as struggling students? Does anybody have something you want to share to that question? Do you mind if I share? So in addition to the students doing personalized learning goals, staff actually does them too. So at the beginning of the year, staff makes their goals. And so one of my personal goals is to look at all the data that the students have on Lexia. And so from that data, that's how I am creating my small reading groups and that's where I can give personalized support to all those different subgroups that you mentioned, those who I have to close the gap on and those who I have to give, those who are exceeding in some areas. So that's how the teachers are spending a lot of time. We spent professional development days and hours looking at the data. And like I said, I have a better understanding of my students now than I did in September. So we digested a lot of that information and we can track that and see how we're doing to close that. And so when they take those assessments again in January, I can see what I need to do to close that gap for those students as well as the other teachers in the district.
So that sounds great. I think A.J. started to touch on this, but the related question I had was about success metrics. So how do you know that you're making the progress that you need to make? How do you know this is working at all?
Michaela?
Yeah. I would say I could also just speak to that. I know like when we're planning, one of the priorities is we want anything we put in front of students to be high ceiling, low floor. The idea that it's accessible to everyone, there's a really high ceiling so kids can reach as high as they are able and motivated to. So I think for like when we think about choice assessments, you also cater to students of like trying it as many as you can. I know for win days, we always have extensions where it's, through the pandemic, we're fortunate to find a lot of actual like really cool online simulations that are related to what we're doing, but beyond the standard. And then students are able, like those high achievers are able to access that during that time, like, okay, I've already mastered the sixth grade standard. Now I can go and look at something ahead and, because it's whatever I need for an individual going there. And then for that metrics piece, at least in sixth grade science, that mastery tracker, like I have my own Excel spreadsheet mastery tracker where I'm able to see, you know, from their pre-test to their assessment at the end of the unit, are we moving from increasing from pre-test to formative, formative to summative? And actually then able to see which students are making that progress. That number of students need the additional support and we have the flex time system at Pierce, which is where we're able to provide that additional support for those two.
Great. We've got a couple of people online, so sure, switch there. Okay. So I just raised, I'm going to raise two people in a row and we'll do it that way? That works?
That sounds good. Then we can come back in here for any other questions.
Great. I think our first one is Fanta, I just lost your name, sorry.
At Kinson Booth.
There we go. Thanks.
Hi, thank you. I had a couple of questions. I think my first question was in regards to children who are high achievers. How are children encouraged to, if they've met the benchmarks and they're at a point where they're, they've established that they know the content? Is it student driven to then surpass that or is it, does the teacher encourage them to do that? My next question was regarding empirically validated studies to support this learning model and kind of how did, how did the school system decide that this was the model that they'd be using? And how are parents integrated into this model? Are parents allowed to be part of the goal setting? When are we hearing about benchmarks? How are we integrated into this process from start to beginning?
Those are some great questions. Wondering if Cindy, are you able to provide some of the context on the sort of validation of this model in terms of?
I can't cite studies, but I will tell you, there's a lot of work on it. Actually, one of the most recent ones I was looking at was how this has become highly effective for special ed students. So I can't cite them off the top of my head, but if you do a Google search, I think you'll find a lot of studies online. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. A lot of studies, not just on personalized learning, but mainly also on universal design for learning, because that's the foundation behind the personalized learning. And the thought that there is no one right way for any child and we need to give kids options. I think both your teachers, our three teachers here today, your chemistry teacher, your middle school science teacher and Justine did a great job of illustrating how they're trying to find those options for students that not only meet their ability to access information and process information, but then how to express their knowledge. So you may have typically in science, if I can get her name right, Ms. Teacher. Michaela was introducing earth science. She may have a variety of materials in order to introduce the concepts, depending on not only the child's interest level, but their reading level, their ability to access higher information than maybe somebody else in the classroom. So you may have anything from a very, a reading level of greater to below and you may have college level materials that kids who have better skills can access in order so that they can only, not only be challenged at the appropriate level, but dive deeper. Obviously, a college level text will have more information than an early read up. And then again, how they're assessed on it. So again, we're not there yet here in Milton, but eventually you'll get to designing rubrics and your rubrics will show you what is the different mastery levels. And your last, your last column on your rubrics will be basically what is exceptional or above and beyond. And encouraging students who have that ability to reach for that last level of learning, that exceptional level of learning. There was something else I was going to say and I forgot in the course of this conversation. Oh, somebody said something very important. So I think it was the parent that just spoke, Fanta. When this is really embedded in the district, it is very learner driven. It is really driven by the students, by their educational needs, their educational interests, their skill sets. So it is very, very driven by the learner. We talk about that the teacher, it drops back to being the facilitator, providing the opportunities, providing the information, guiding students, helping them stay on track, helping them to develop appropriate goals, helping them to recognize when they should be stretching themselves. We certainly don't want kids taking an easy way out. Also, I noticed on the sixth grade science teacher, she had the beginning of what we call learning menus or learning pathways and she had the three levels of hotness. Well, I will venture to say if I tapped into the very hot, Michaela, it was a different level of challenge than somebody who was tapping into the mild. So you begin to build those type of options and supports in your materials. But I would not deceive you and tell you this is going to happen overnight. It's a very long process to get to where you have to have all these pieces. But I have to tell you, I am very impressed at how far they have come already.
I just wanted to add that we're, you know, we still have our curriculum that is aligned with standards and the standards tell us what students should know and be able to do. And personalized learning allows our students to demonstrate in a variety of ways their competency in meeting those standards. So that, that piece is not changing. Our students still have to. Our students still have to meet these standards. They still have to be college and career-ready, as we say. And we have some teachers who, who are saying, none of this is really new to them, because they've been teaching this way for many years. Some teachers set up, have been setting up their classrooms this way. What, you know, there were some things that are different, of course. One of the things that we say when we talk about personalized learning is that students have voice and choice in their learning. So we have new tools, we have, we have increased ways for students to demonstrate their competency, but they still have to meet the standards. We still have to have rigor in our programs and our curriculum. And we'll be meeting, we are better able to meet the needs of all students through personalized learning practices.
Can one of you speak to this idea of parent involvement? And sort of the question of how parents can be integrated to support the goal-setting or just personalized learning? I mean, in any ways that are different from just generally kind of being engaged in supporting their students' learning? Anyone have thoughts on that question?
I can speak to that briefly, but can you hear me okay? Okay. So yeah, Fanta, I think that Cindy kind of hit the nail on the head where she says, this is still a process, and we're still kind of dipping our toes in the water here of personalized learning. And all of what Justine was talking about in terms of goal-setting and really empowering our students to look at data. Particularly, I know I can speak for Tucker and the elementary level. Like, this is something we're really pushing this year and working hard to do. So we're, we're getting started with that work. And I think what that will evolve and start to turn into is involving parents in that process, which is kind of part of where we want to head with this. So AJ mentioned, we're trying to educate all stakeholders, and that includes our teachers too still, right? So we're kind of taking that top-down approach where our leadership team is involved in work with Cindy Tamar, really learning more about personalized learning and being able to take that back to our buildings and empower our teachers with this work. So I had the pleasure of going in Justine's classroom and doing that with her class. I'm looking forward to doing that in more classrooms this year, even in those younger grades, right? So those primary grades. And I think that this can evolve into a place where it could even be in my dream world, student-led conferences, where students really are owning their schoolwork and their parents are there hearing their goals and part of that process, and setting those goals with them. Again, that's not gonna happen overnight, but I'm really hopeful that that's kind of the next step in where we go with this. So I appreciate your question, and I think you bring up a really good point and kind of a place where we can go next with all of this work. So thanks.
If I could add a little bit to that, so hearing Justine's presentation, I was really happy to hear about that, because my daughter is actually a student in her class. And after school today, I heard, I heard somebody mention that they were working on goal-setting in the class. So I checked in with my daughter and I asked about her goals. And you know, I wanted to hear all about like what they, what she said as her own personal goals. But she told me that she was not ready to share those goals yet with me as her, as her parent. And that, you know, she needed to take some time to learn about those goals and to work on those goals before she was ready to share them with me. So it was just really interesting to, to hear that process of her kind of like learning about her own agency in her, in her education, and like taking ownership of that and letting me know that maybe she's not ready to share yet. But I'm looking forward to when she is ready to share and when I can be a part of that process with her. So I, I think the, the point here is that I think all of the stakeholders, the parents, the teacher, the students, the leaders are all in this journey together, and we're all kind of learning as this process unfurls, you know? So we'll, we'll, I'm sure, be coming across lots of, hopefully pleasant surprises along the way. But hopefully, we're all moving in the same direction together and all learning together.
Janet, did you want to add something?
Well, I think, I think AJ can probably maybe correct me if I'm wrong, that timeline, I'm not quite sure about. We had a technology committee that was looking at proposing to introduce personalized learning practices. They visited a number of schools where personalized learning is in place. And then they formed a personalized learning committee, as was introduced. Parents have been involved in both, both committees. I know that the principals also have, in developing their school improvement plans, have discussed some of our, you know, some of our work with their site councils. So there's been some parent involvement in that, but the reason, you know, for this evening is to, you know, is to inform parents and to begin a conversation about, about these new practices. I don't know, AJ, if there's anything you want to add about the work that was done?
Yeah, no, one of our most important visits was to Melrose, where Dr. Tamar was the superintendent. And we had an amazing visit. We were all so inspired leaving there and saying how we had to bring it back to Milton and start to implement this change. And this is now four years later, and we're, we're again, like Kirsten just said, we're just dipping our toes into it. You know, we've set this year our main goals to work with data. So personalized learning is rooted with data, and this is how we then will understand where our kids are at and we can meet their needs. So Fanta, when you say, how are we gonna help both the students who are struggling and our high flyers? It's all rooted in data. And so when we have all of our formative assessments and summative assessments, our teachers are really gonna evaluate where our students are at. And then that coupled with the fact that we really know who our students are as learners, we can then meet the needs of every learner in our class.
Great.
Thank you.
So I raised someone else up online, and then, is that good? Okay, so Megan, you're next.
Fanta took a lot of the questions. They were all excellent, which all of us were thinking. But I guess I just, I, I need some clarification when it comes to competency versus standards. So from a grading perspective, or, and I know Fanta did touch upon this, but how do you then identify, or do you use this data to now say, all right, we have advanced students that could use advanced classes? How is that measured from a holistic perspective? So now we're looking at each individual student, how they learn differently, but how are they measured as a whole?
I'm not gonna answer for how Milton assesses, but there's many ways to assess, but let me, competency, the standards are your competencies. So I went through this with the Department of Ed at one point, when I was first going down this, this pathway. And when you read the curriculum frameworks, which I would not wish on anybody, every, you know, there, there are, as Justine showed on her lesson, there are specific standards that, that is what your child has to master, what is in that standard. So we flip them around to what we often call Swabot, student will be able to, and that is your competency. So your competencies are built into the curriculum frameworks. What you'll eventually do is maybe decide on what your power standards are, the most important ones, and use that to guide your measurements. So for example, we know that in order for a child to write a well-written essay, there's many sub-standards. But the standard you may finally assess her, him or her on, is how well that essay is written. Because it subsumes the need to use grammar, the need to be unified, the need to be coherent. So does that make sense to you, Megan, about the, about the curriculum standards? Are your competencies?
It does, but I, I'm just, I love the whole concept of this. I'm just confused as to, you know, if you have someone that's consistently above standard, or, you know, performing well above the other members of the class. I'm just like confused as to how those students are identified to move up, and how the rest of the class gauges, because you have someone completely here, you know, you have all ends of the spectrum. How are these students assessed and like graded as a result of that? Because it's, if you're giving opportunities to retest, is that taken into account? Or are we just aiming for everyone to get the same grade? I guess that's, that's my question.
Megan, I'll start. So A, that's, we want all of our students to master all the standards right now. That's no different whether we're choosing personalized learning or any other model that's out there. Every student in our room, our goal is that they're gonna be mastering the standards. If we can get every student in our classroom to go above and beyond mastery and exceed the standard, then that's just absolutely fantastic. What personalized learning is gonna allow us to do is, it's gonna provide us the opportunity to meet the needs of those high flyers. They're not just gonna sit there and be stagnant in the classroom anymore. We're gonna be supplying our teachers with the opportunity to collect the data they need to identify the students who need remediation, who are on target to master it, you know, according to the timeline that they've established. And also identify the students who have already mastered it, so now they can go and do enrichment activities. And so when we think about choice boards, and Michaela had the mild to the spicy, if those spicy activities were high-flyer activities, then it's gonna be the teacher's job to use their professional judgment and expertise to guide the students to make that choice, that that's what they should be working on right now. Versus the students who are struggling and need remediation, they're gonna be steered towards the mild, and so that they can build that foundation as they move forward.
How does one teacher do that, though? That's, that's my question. I mean, you guys are doing so much, and I get it, I love the concept, but how is this possible with just one person?
Constant formative assessments, but go ahead, Michaela.
As a formative assessment, so like I, you know, kind of know where kids, students are at. But I also know like for when I do either mild, medium, spicy, or ICOM level practice, students actually do it's like a four-question little, where am I at right now? Like, they can't use their notebooks, they can't use their resources, what's already in my brain? Like, what do I already know? And then based on their score from that, that's the starting point for our conversation about, okay, what choice do you make right now? Are you already here? Great, start at spicy. Are you like, whoops, it wasn't stuck in my brain yet? Okay, I'm gonna start it. So it's using the students actually in their own agency is one of the strategies, because then it builds their also reflection ability of knowing, where am I at? Okay, now what choice can I make? And then we also do a reflection point, okay, you finished your first one, was that super? Yep, I got it, I checked the answers, I got them all right, great, move up. Did you do one? It was like, ooh, wow, I missed a lot of those things. Maybe I should take a step back, rebuild my foundation, and then go back up. So it's one of the ways that I manage it with 122 students is having them actually manage it, right? Like, providing them the skills and time and space to drive their own learning and choices. Now, that's obviously you're gonna have a few students who are like, hmm, maybe let's challenge yourself a little bit more right now. Or, you know, where you are helping guide that. But it does help them then build a skill where it is student-centered and I am just facilitating and able to support. They're really the driver of what do I know? What do I need to know? How am I gonna get there? And I'm there to support them through that process, as opposed to driving them through that process. Like, providing the framework and the support, they have, they're, they have the skills. We just have to show them how to do it, so they are driving it.
And Megan, that's why that's our initiative for this whole year, around data. And we've had professional development, we're gonna continue with it this whole year, because it is difficult, it is challenging, and we need to help our teachers.
It's mind-boggling. I give you guys credit. I mean, I'm not taking away from it, it's just, I'm, I'm a data person myself, so my mind's just kind of like completely, how do you do all this?
And that's why it's gonna take years to get to where Michaela is. Michaela's been doing this for years and years and years.
It's awesome. I appreciate your efforts, 100%. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Megan, for raising those questions. I just wanted to, like, I know, we're gonna have you answer your question, I just wanted to make one quick connection that was occurring to me during that dialogue, in terms of like the school committee's role in all this, right? Because as you can see, like, we are not the ones who are executing on this set of practices, right? But what are we doing? I mean, I'm sitting here and I'm thinking about, okay, this is really driving home for me, like, why are, it's so important that we are able to, like, provide time and resources for professional development so that our teachers are able to actually kind of gain these skills in a relevant way to their work, right? We've heard about the time, we've like heard about the need to practice with experts, so I'm thinking about that. But I'm also thinking about our curriculum, and like, you know, if you've been paying attention, you know that we do these sort of periodic evaluations of our curriculum. And we identified recently the need for new curriculum in math and in social studies, which is being rolled out right now, right? Why do we need those curricula? Because the ones we had before were substandard, they were not able to like push and support students to meet the standards that are required of them in Massachusetts. So teachers were lacking the tools they needed to kind of get students where they needed to be, right? So we had to invest in those curriculum pieces. And then finally, the formative assessments and the ability to collect data. Like, these systems of Lexia and iReady, LaLilo and French that you, like, these, these are programs that we pay to, for our students to be able to use, so that we are constantly collecting the, the data, right? In addition to the unit assessments and all the pieces that teachers create and have access to through the curricula. So I'm just like thinking about that for ourselves, we're about to start our budget. You'll start, you'll hear us talking about these pieces as needs, you know, to pay for, and I think this is kind of helpful. I'm really sorry, I just wanted to interject that, because I'm sitting here like, what are we doing to support this really important work, you know?
Sorry. My name's Bonnie Stackpool. I've spoken to them times. I'm a mom of two and an educator. I have seen the disaster of these past two years in living color. I know I don't only speak for myself, but I speak for many parents when I see the learning loss. See that in my classroom every day, I see it with my own children, one of which I pulled out of Milton Public Schools because of the unfortunate disaster of middle school. High school has been fabulous, though. Thank you, thank you to all teachers. How does this, you gave us a very high-level picture. How does this address the learning loss? The fact that we do have second and third graders who are not reading? Because to me, that is where our priority lies. Like, could you speak to that? Because I didn't get a lot of detail, a lot of information on academic rigor or robustness. I got a very nice picture, and I agree, like, as a teacher, I try and address each individual child. But if a child cannot read, they can't access any of this.
And I would never disagree with you, Bonnie, because it's, and I, huh, pony? That the gentleman before said, if we don't get our kids reading, game over, okay? And we're seeing all that, and I'll tell you from a personal, we did the same with my granddaughter. We ended up, she had a disastrous two years with, you know, online learning and pulled her as well. One of the things that I'm going to discuss with the team, and Garth and I have talked about it briefly, is, I gave you a big overview because you, I'd be talking for hours if, you know. There's a lot of structural changes that have to happen as well. So I believe Justine talked about her win time, or maybe it was Michaela talked about her win time. It's a concept you're familiar with. So one of the things you have to look at is, as AJ says, data is critical here. It's data, data, data. So we know where our kids are, how they're progressing, where they're running into obstacles. And that's whether they're special ed, EL, at-risk, gifted or talented, it applies the same. So one of the things that I'm going to talk to them about is, what are the structures or the restructuring you do of your school schedules to allow for remediation and re-instruction for kids who are lagging? Because as you know from a teacher, and I think you've got some really talented teachers here, it's amazing. And I, and I, and I laugh at Megan's question, because you know as a teacher, it's like an orchestra. You always got 15, 15 sections going at the same time. But you have to build in some structures into your overall day that if you have a kid who is really struggling, what are what are the systemic supports we have that can dig deeper with this child without them falling further behind, yet give them the opportunity at the same time to keep pace with the rest of the class? And it often comes down to a scheduling and a staffing issue, quite frankly. You know, do you have enough interventionists in your school system? Reading, math, writing, whatever they may be. Do you have enough social emotional coaches? Because again, one of the things we know coming out of COVID is we're having a lot of kids who are just struggling with doing school. So those are some of the systemic structures. So when Ally talks about the the school committee piece and the monetary piece, that is part of the big picture in this whole paradigm change that you have to address.
I guess I would then further question that, you know, several of the teachers here said that it is, you know, student driven. This past couple of years have shown that a lot of students have lost their drive. You know, the students that were under the covers during the hybrid program, right? And so to me, I, you know, I think that this is a step in the right direction that maybe is necessary or is necessary in a couple of years. But I think if we don't fix the fact that we have this learning loss, and I've had parents reach out to me constantly, parents I don't know, saying that, again, their children aren't reading. And that's where they want the focus of Milton Public Schools. They want you to focus on those basic structural academic pieces. And I, again, I love this idea. I teach ESL, so I try and incorporate that. I can do that because I have classes of five to 10. I don't see how, again, when you have these struggling students, how it can truly work across the board. It can obviously work in some of your classrooms. And I applaud you, what you're doing. It really is a wonderful thing. But if we don't have that academic academic structure with these students, we're going to continue to see, you know, unfortunately, our MCAS scores not be what we would hope for our students in in Milton. And speaking to that, I know somebody asked about what do we do with our gifted children? I work in Quincy. Starting now in grade three, they have separate programs where they are, starting with gifted children. Third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Milton got rid of those in in the middle school. And that I think they use the pandemic as an excuse. But in Quincy, they're putting those in. I would like to see a focus on some of our high achieving students. Because I know many of us do have, you know, with students who need those extra resources, we are there. I'm one of those resources. But I don't see any resources being given to those students who do want more. And I think it behooves us to actually look at those students. Because by law, we don't have to. We do have to look after children who have learning disabilities. But I would like Milton to actually look deeper and address the needs of those students who who want more, who crave more. And there's nothing there for them. And we have some fantastic teachers. I would say most teachers are fantastic and want the very best for our students. But I don't think we have this structure put in in our schools. Or we've removed that structure. And I know for the past two years, I've heard from literally hundreds of parents who echo what I'm telling you. And I just don't see us as a system addressing that. And I would love it if if we could. And again, now I only have one child in the system because nobody, nobody tried to help my other child when I reached out. So I thank you for listening and I thank the educators. I know your job is thankless. I know it is difficult. And I thank you up there. I know I have railed at a couple of you over the past two years. And it is only from a deep love of the students of this town. But you do owe it to all students to get those academics up. Give them the tools they need because parents are crying out for it. And when I say crying out for it, I mean that. When you have a third grader who cannot access content because they cannot read, this is meaningless. Please help all of them. All right? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. And I know we have a couple. I want to make sure we can hear the questions of the people who are still here. I do, I'm sure Ms. Driscoll or, you know, various of the other school based, particularly curriculum directors, it could speak to how are the interventionists being used within the schools? I know the site councils in, you know, we've had a few of those presentations. We'll continue to have more. They've been giving us some information about like how they are using those. So, you know, I don't want to take time to do that now so we can hear the rest of the questions. But thank you for sharing those concerns. Sure. So I see three hands. Is there anybody else who is hoping to speak in this room? Okay. Is anyone else online?
Nobody online. Nope.
Okay, so I I know we're over time, I think, and but I want to make sure we can hear. So I guess I I saw the kind of going this way. So if you'd like to.
Oh, closer.
Sure.
Hi, everyone. My name's Regina Murphy. I have two daughters at elementary school level. I'm actually a product of the Quincy Public School Program that Pony just spoke of. I'm the daughter of immigrants. I'm the youngest of five children. And without that program, I don't know where school would have taken me. In fifth grade, being identified as a high achiever and then continuing through middle school on that path allowed me to excel. I eventually went to North Quincy High School, ended up getting into Yale. And now I work in oncology, helping cancer patients. So I use that as an example of how this kind of differentiation and identifying children who could be high achievers can really open up possibilities and opportunities that they may not have otherwise had. I think the concept of this personalized learning program sounds incredible. I love it. I do worry that it's an incredible burden on our teachers. Asking them to not only understand all of the various personalized kind of learning styles of the students, but also almost developing individualized curriculums and content for each child, I think, sounds incredibly, incredibly difficult. And I just, I I struggle to see how this will be successful when you have children starting in one classroom at such very wide ends of the spectrum. And so I guess I just would leave you with a thought, which is, would this not be easier to implement if we did bring back, for example, at the middle school level honors classes? Just using one example. I know the decision was made a couple of years ago to eliminate that program. But again, when I think about personalized learning, which again, I think is a wonderful concept, if you have kids starting at just such different places, my goodness, that's hard on the teacher, right? But if you create a program where kids are perhaps, you know, grouped or in separate classrooms based on, you know, where their starting point is, perhaps that just gives a more of an opportunity for success. So that's just a thought based on my personal experience. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Would you like to go ahead?
Thank you. My name is Jen Sheehan. And I just want to thank you guys for opening this up and letting parents talk and ask questions. Everybody asked questions that I had already thought of. But the one last question I do have is, I'm curious if there's an additional cost to this and kind of what it is. I know you kind of mentioned it on the higher level. I'm just curious if there's cost associated, extra cost associated with this and if it's, you know, already covered in part of the budget that we have.
So. I mean, I think generally speaking, there's the costs are sort of what we already talked about. I mean, there's professional development costs, right? Like, you know, Cindy's here tonight out of the generosity of her partnership with us. But like, you know, when you are paying people to would to come consult, train, your leadership team, your educators, right? But the costs, like, the choice is that we're working with Cindy to develop this initiative. And if we weren't working with her, you know, we would be spending a professional development budget some other way, right? Like we have in the past. So I am I am not aware. I mean, I'm not on the finance committee per se right now, but I'm not aware of like extra costs that are not sort of costs we would already be, you know, using, doing. Just not on this particular initiative. I think when we start to talk about perhaps the need for looking at our schedule, you know, then yeah, then we might have to kind of have those conversations. And that's the conversation we have every year, right? Because you can see in our budget line by line, like what we are allocating our funds towards. And that's, you know, that's the conversation that we're, that will be another community forum that we'll be having in the coming months. So I don't know if anyone has any other clarification on that, but I don't I don't think personalized learning per se has its own extra costs associated with it.
I think in the budget development process this year, what you'll be hearing mainly is that we are looking to maintain positions that we have funded through grants that will no longer be. And those positions are generally to address the unfinished learning that you just referred to. And I know tonight we're talking about personalized learning, but we recognize the unfinished learning. We are very, very concerned. We recognize that students, we have struggling readers. We have a reading program. We provide systematic instruction. We provide support. We've hired extra reading specialists. We've hired interventionists in math. We have really done a lot of work to address unfinished learning. And we know that we're not going to, our children are not going to recover in one year or maybe even two years. I mean, this is a national problem. So we are very well aware. We we have discussed at school committee member, at school committee meetings in the past, what we're doing around unfinished learning. The school committee has been very interested in hearing about that. So if, you know, if you would like to, I know you had concerns, Ms. Stackpool, but please, please feel free to call. And I'm happy to share with you all of the, all of the things that we've put in place to address that.
Mr. Walker, I know we still have a couple other people who haven't gotten to speak yet.
I just have one point on.
Okay.
The budget question, which is that it would be impossible to think that with the unfinished learning, the data that you're gathering about student deficits and the high achieving students who need additional resources, it would be impossible to think that it wouldn't be an additional cost, both with regard to resources for students and resources for teachers. So I would encourage you during this upcoming process to look at those additional costs and tell us what they are.
Right. Yeah, and that's that is a good point. It's not, I think what I was trying to answer is the program of personalized learning as an initiative. Like, yeah, what you're talking about is the resources required to educate our students. I am 110% in agreement that that takes resources and that's the conversation that we have, right? And it's everything. It's all of this. The personalized learning is sort of a particular slice. But yeah, we can keep talking about this. And, you know, it may be an interesting exercise, actually, as we go forward, not just personalized learning, but all the, you know, three pillars of our strategic plan, safe, supportive schools, equitable learning. Like, you know, we could even kind of look to tag like pieces of our budget. Like what, you know, which pieces is this directly supporting? Like, I think that's, you know, something that we should be able to do in theory. You know, we'll be working through that in the coming weeks. Okay, I want to, yes, you and then.
Hello. My name's Mary Jane O'Doherty. Thank you, everyone, for having this open forum. It's really a wonderful thing that the parents can communicate with all of you. Because I think that the parents really should be driving the school and what we do together as a collaboration. As far as the personalized learning, I think it's a wonderful thing. It sounds great. My mother always used to say like the saying like, I'm from Missouri, the show me state, because she had to see it to learn it. So I think we do all learn differently, but I hope that this isn't a way to water down the education that our children are getting. Because I feel like if you keep having them retest and retest until they make it, then that's just not proving that they actually know the work. It's just giving them multiple chances until they get it. As a nurse, I can't have multiple chances to do my job. And I think kids do all learn differently, but they have to have certain standards. And so I just hope that this is not a way of kind of just floating all the kids through the school so that they make the grade and get out. Because I know that has happened in many schools throughout the years. I do want to say on a funny note that I think next time we should probably meet in a circle or in little pods instead of having all of us face you.
That's a great point. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Colleen McCarthy, 108 Oliver Street, Justine. And I apologize, I missed your presentation, but. This sounds awesome. I really, and I have three children in the public schools. And they range from, and Justine knows my children. Colin is an overachiever and my youngest requires a special aid prompt that our schools do not have the resources to provide her. What I want to understand is with our very limited budget and resources that we have available to our children today, including your reading curriculum right now, I haven't heard that talked about. It's substandard. It does not meet D E standards. My children have been evaluated by neuropsychologists who have never heard of our reading curriculum. Harvard educated doctors have never heard of it. Why do we not have Orton Gillingham in the classroom or the Wilson? We talk about reading loss. What is our reading curriculum? And I'd like, I really would like that to be addressed first.
That would be a whole other meeting if you if you want us to address the reading curriculum. I mean, we 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 certainly can can set up some time to to address, you know, address your questions about that. We have a reading curriculum that is scientifically based. And actually, the dean of the Harvard School of Education is one of the authors of the curriculum, Dr. Noni LaSalle. He's a.
Does it meet D E standards with all due respect?
With all due respect, Ed Reports is a is a an evaluation of curriculum programs. The the review that D E did was not complete in National Geographic, that are the publishers of our Reading Street program. I've reached for reading. I'm sorry. Reading Street is a program I used years ago that just sort of came up. Our Reach for Reading program, they have addressed and responded to this group of teachers who who worked through D E to evaluate the program. This this program is a, as I said, it's scientifically based. It's based on research and practices. I don't know if, I know you've been using it, Justine. You have used it in the early grades, too.
Yes. But this provides. My my context also, the background, my, we're using a different reading curriculum for our special education students that meets D E standards. And why, I guess I'm curious.
Orton Gillingham doesn't belong in the classroom. We, this has a systematic phonics instructional program.
Okay.
But Orton Gillingham is a specialized instruction program. The students who don't, who learn in a different way.
And the Wilson is the same?
Same thing.
Okay. I guess.
But we we don't see, we don't see that in the schools. You don't see that in the classroom as the as the as the only show in town for phonics.
So I guess really the context of my question is our children have so much learning loss.
So I guess really the context of my question is, our children have so much learning loss. We need, our teachers, like Mrs. Novak, are doing an amazing, amazing job. And what I hear from this learning program is that it's going to require an incredible amount of support of our teachers. They need more aides in the classroom helping them. Are we willing to do that? Are we willing, if you look at my daughter, who requires someone to prompt her in a classroom setting, is the school committee and the town committed to those resources for those children? What are we going to do with that data? Is my question. And Lizzie, I know you came back and you said, you know, "Oh, I realized that, you know, yeah, we have to hire more teachers." That should be the first thing that we talk about when we look at this, is we need more resources, we need more aides. It can't be additional coaching. You need, we need to think about end state and what that means to actually supporting our teachers in the classroom. They need help. They need support. They're doing an incredible job, but if you're going to ask them to create these individualized plans, we have to have a plan to do something with the data that they collect and a commitment from the committee to do that. So, sorry. I have three children and I'm passionate about them, so thank you. And thank you, Justine, for your work.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
Nobody else online? Nope.
Does anyone else have a final word, comment, question? I know we're way over time, but yes, please.
I'll just keep it short, but to follow on something Mr. Walker was talking about, you know, how do we assess if this is working? Can you tell, talk about actual success stories? I mean, who in Massachusetts has used this and whether it's pre-pandemic or even since then? I'd like to hear the success stories. Is anyone in the top 10, top 20, top 30 schools that the MCAS results are out? Are any of the top 30 schools using this model? And if not, why are we considering it? I heard Melrose mentioned, but I checked the stats, we're basically outperforming Melrose, so, you know, that doesn't, doesn't sound like a selling argument. So why do we need this? And, you know, can we point to someone who's used it successfully? Basically, that's it. Thank you.
I mean, I think that brings us back to the first question around the validation of sort of the choice to embark on this.
So a few years ago, in this part of how we got involved, they put together a consortium of people. They called it Learning Launch. And there's a, there's a number of districts, I think you can check with it with D E on them, Nadek, Melrose was one of them, I don't remember, Framingham was, maybe Millis, maybe Wayland, but a number of districts began to go down this pathway. And as I said to you in my original presentation, every district does it different. They create a model that works for their city or town, for the needs of their city or town. Some are more technology heavy than others. And you can infer with any of them. This also happens at the college level now. There's a lot of recent research recently, actually, what did I just say? John Hawkins, Harvard, a lot of other colleges are beginning to appro, to adopt this approach, you know, getting away from what many of us experienced, 300 kids in a lecture hall. So there's probably a lot you can find out there, Lizzie.
Thanks. Is there a few want to say anything?
I think this was, this was really informative and, you know, I mean, it's great to experience this. And I was grateful for all the questions that were asked. I think it offers a lot of clarifications of things as a committee that we need to focus on and work on. And get back to you on some of the answers, you know? And it's, I think, as the, as the next few months, a few weeks, as we start working on the budget, you know, a lot of these things will kind of fall into place and will, you know, you'll have a better understanding of what's needed to make this happen. And I think just as one of the presenters mentioned, that we are just getting our toes dipped into this, so we're going to learn and evolve and might have to tweak things as we go, but it's also a learning process for us, right? And we welcome the feedback. I mean, that's huge, I think, for community involvement. And I'm really happy that you are all here and all the people listening, because this is, we need feedback. Like, you know, we're doing this and this is great, and we think it's great, and we're, you know, and but to hear the feedback really helps us, because I think it helps us to kind of, you know, evaluate what's working and what's not, and where we can fix things and where we can add additional support and resources and where it might not be working or might not be necessary. So it's important, I think, as a community, for all of you to stay engaged as we go through this process. This isn't just about the three of us or the six of us or, you know, and the administration that, like, we want this to be, you know, a joint effort. So we, thank you for being here and for everything that you've said. Thank you.
I just want to say we are working on the budget now. We've already been meeting with department heads in the schools, and we're also meeting with the principals as they discuss their needs for the next, the next school year that's coming up. And then we will be meeting and presenting our budget requests to the warrant committee sometime in December. And so we, we are usually the first department to go in front of the warrant committee, and we give them a very detailed budget. Our special ed population is increasing significantly, the needs of our students all across the board, because we have so many new students coming into the district. You know, we are, we are needing more staff and more support, as you, if you're a parent, you know that. So, you know, our budget's always complicated and, you know, what I think we need and what the select board often think we need and what the town managers think we need, we always have a back and forth, a discussion, and I think everyone tries to do the best they can, but it's always a really hard decision to make about the budget for the schools.
Thank you. It's so late for our teachers on a school night. Thank you so much for staying beyond the time. Thank you all for staying. Thank you all very much for being here with us and sharing all of your perspectives and information. And I think this is, you said, Janet, like, this is the beginning of a community conversation about this topic, which is connected to so many other topics, which many of you have, you know, raised in connection. So I just thank you again for coming. And do kind of follow up with us. We can follow up with you and look for more opportunities to be engaged as well. And thank you again, Cindy, for being with us and for Janet and Garth, the work you're doing to lead this effort. And I think we can call it a night.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.